Good evening, welcome to the Lompoke City Council Meeting. Could we have roll call and chair switch please? You're not going to like that chair Joe, I sat in it.
Councilmember Costa, present. Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Lingle.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dwayne Hombdal. Mayor Jeanlin.
Here. Mayor Protem is wine judging in Northern California. Okay, so next up is Oral Communications and I know there are people here to talk about an item that's on the closed session agenda that I can't participate in because I own property within 500 feet, actually a lot closer, so I yield the gavel. Tag, you're in.
I'd now like to open the meeting to Oral Communications. This is your opportunity to speak.
Could I go on?
Yes, you'll need to introduce yourself and state your name.
Hello, my name is James Mercer. I am the President for North Star Guilds, representing the haunted house this year. We'd like to put it on city property that we've looked at with several people already. And I'd just like to say that we're doing this as a community event. You know, granted, there is some profits made from that that is going towards the nonprofit, but for the most part, it is a community event for, you know, kids, families. We have a lot of fun. We've opened up this year for a kiddy hour. Basically, it's the haunted house where we've got an hour that we're going to have all the lights on so the scares aren't as scary, so the kids can go through there and have a good time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Oral Communications? If not, should we call the mayor back first? Okay. Can you hear us out there? I don't think you can. John, can you come back to the dais? Like big brother or something?
Okay, we will now go to closed session with two business items. Item number one, conference with labor negotiators, city designated representatives Gabriel Garcia, Brad Wilkie, Colin Tanner, employee organization, the Lompoke Police Officers Association. And item number two, which I will not participate in, conference with real property negotiators, property at 320 North D Street, Lompoke, California, agency negotiator Kevin McKeon, public works director, negotiating partners, parties, James Mercer Jr., representing the Pirates, under consideration price and terms. And we'll see you at 7:00. Thank you. Welcome to the Lompoke City Council Meeting and for this evening for the invocation, we have Pastor Darren Hunt. Darren?
Almighty God, we come before you today taking a moment to give thanks. Thank you that as this meeting gets underway, we can ask for your divine wisdom, help, strength, and protection for these proceedings tonight and on our city as well. Thank you that you are never too busy to hear our pleas for help. Thank you that you are never too concerned about other matters to not also give attention to the matters that weigh heavy on us. Thank you that just as each one of us who is gathered in this room tonight, or maybe watching this from home, wants the best for this great city of Lompoke, you also want what is best for this city and its citizens. Thank you for caring for the least among us just as much as you care for the greatest among us. Tonight, I pray that you would bless this city. I ask that you would give this mayor and these council members wisdom to be the leaders that you've appointed them to be. Help them do what is right and not merely what is easy. Help them act swiftly and justly with fairness towards everyone and every matter that is to be considered. Thank you for these men and women who willingly serve this city as our mayor and city council. Bless them as they desire to be a blessing to this fine city of Lompoke. Finally, tonight, we are joined by some great men and women from our Lompoke Police and Fire Departments as our new Lompoke Police Chief, Pat Walsh, has sworn in. We pray for this transition for the department, for this transition for the Walsh family, to be incredibly smooth and beneficial to all involved. Thank you for our police officers and firefighters who serve this city day after day and night after night. God, as these departments are on our mind and even as they walk out of this building right now, we pray for your protection and blessing for each one who serves in these vital roles. Protect them body, mind, and soul. In your most holy name, amen.
Do you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One quick announcement, on September 6th, I presented a proclamation to Battalion Chief Stan Hart in honor of his retirement from the city of Lompoke. And now, without further ado, we'll have the swearing-in ceremony for our new Lompoke Police Chief, Pat Walsh. Pat, as you and your family join us. Hey, you get the whole stage, so you can take it all up.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Patrick A. Walsh, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and to the Constitution of the State of California, that I will support the laws and policies of the city of Lompoke, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties and responsibilities of the Office of Police Chief of the city of Lompoke to the best of my ability. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
I have a 40-minute speech. I know how you like to go at 1:00 in the morning. I want to thank the mayor and the city council, Patrick Wyman, and the community members and the police chiefs and lawyers that sat on my panel for the confidence you have in me to pick me to do this job. I'm very, very honored. I want to start by introducing my family. Catherine is my wife for 29 years.[625.16][625.16](applause) My son Matthew and his wife Rachel.[633.66][633.66](applause) My daughter Lauren.[640.54][640.54](applause) My sister Sheila and her daughter Dorothy.[649.22][649.22](applause) Who didn't tell me they were coming till a minute ago?[656.82][656.82](laughing) All right, my sisters and brothers-in-law, Stephen, Sharon, Krista, where's your cat?[665.32][665.32](applause) And the best of all, Bella. Bella, wave, wave.[674.43][674.43](applause) And the contingent from Santa Barbara, my friends, the Casey and McKevers, if you guys -- this is a better town than Santa Barbara, it's cooler, isn't it?[687.01][687.01](laughing) I'd also like to thank all the dignitaries that are here. Cam Sanchez, the police chief, the chief of police from Santa Barbara, Ralph Martin from Santa Maria, Wes Maroni from Hancock College, Larry Ralston, thank you for the job.[712.70][712.70](laughing) Kurt Lotapal, are you still here Kurt? All your guys ran out. I see folks from the Public Safety Commission and the Chaplains Corps, thank you guys for being here. It's an honor to be here and lead this department. I'd like to honor the men and women of the Lompoke Police Department. You have been nothing but gracious to me and you've helped me already a lot. The first few days have been -- the first day was like going to school for the first time, but it was great. You guys have helped me and just so you know, I went around and I did some research obviously before I interviewed for this job and I walked around town and asked people what they thought of -- obviously their town, they're very proud of it, and asked them what they thought of you and nothing but glowing remarks and actually said your names. They knew you by name and they thought very highly of you and that, to me, was just -- that was the key for me to apply for this job. So I'm very proud to join your ranks. You have a good reputation. Law enforcement only works if you have that reputation. You can't do anything in law enforcement without the community's trust and you are trustworthy and you've shown that, so that would be my first priority, my only priority, not my only priority, but that would be a priority of mine, is to maintain that trust and to build upon it, and you have a great foundation for that. I'll close, I'm not going to do a 40-minute speech, mayor, so. I'll close by saying this, I was invited to a gathering today, this weekend, my wife and I were, and the community's been incredibly gracious to my family and I. And we get to this house, we drove in circles until we found it, and we get to this house and there's a sign on the front door and it said, "If you are a friend, come in. If you are not a friend, come in and you will be in a few minutes." I think that should be on the sign when you enter Lompoke, because that's how the community is here. That's the way you've treated us and that's the way you treat each other, it's pretty cool. So I'm honored to be here and thank you for all coming, thank you very much.[841.43][841.43](applause)
And now, it gives me great pleasure to hereby proclaim the chief's cake break.[860.82][860.82](laughing) We'll have a break.[865.32][865.32](phone rings) Okay, if everybody can find their seat. We took a couple things out of order here because we had kind of a large crowd, so now we'll come back to the report from closed session. City Attorney?
Thank you, mayor. There were two items on the closed session agenda, both were discussed, and with regard to one of the matters, there's nothing to report on the first matter, which was labor negotiations, and on the second matter, it was real property negotiations, and it was dealing with the property that everyone most likely knows as the Moore Mill and Lumberyard on D Street that the city now owns, and there was a request for that property to be used for a haunted house. And so I would just want to let you know, the community know what the council decided tonight. The city council has authorized the city administrator and staff to work with James Mercer over the next seven days to determine whether it will actually be physically possible for the previous lumberyard property to be timely converted to meet all public health and safety requirements for that property to be used for a haunted house for this coming Halloween. If staff determines that that is possible, then this matter will be returned to the council for another closed session discussion at the special meeting on next Tuesday, September 23rd.
Thank you. Next, we have a couple proclamations. First, I'd invite the Daughters of the American Revolution to come down.
That's your official photographer, right?
Yeah.
All right.
This is a proclamation for Constitution Week 2014, whereas September 17th, 2014, marks the 227th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commence, which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuance of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, John H. Lind, Mayor of the city of Lompoke, California, do hereby proclaim September 17th to 23rd, '23, 2014, to be Constitution Week in Lompoke, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the framers of the Constitution held in
I was going to hand you a hand pocket of the Constitution and I had about five of them out and I couldn't find them all, so I'll be by your office to give you a hand copy of that. And I'd like to remind everybody else that yesterday was the 100th anniversary of our national anthem, and so we will be celebrating that all week, and if you get a chance, There Four Stands Us, you might look at what some of them say. So thank you very much, mayor.
You can bring the whole crowd. Come on, you guys. Aw, man. This is the small print version. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas the prevention of mental and/or substance -- mental issues and substance abuse disorders, treatment is -- I'm just going to go back to that sentence and start over. And I read this twice. Whereas the prevention of mental health and other and/or substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery and support services. And whereas in 2012, 2.5 million people aged 12 and older received specialty treatment for substance abuse disorder, and 34.1 million adults aged 18 and older received mental health services according to the 2012 National Survey of Drug Use and Health. Given the serious nature of this public health problem, we must continue to reach the millions more who need help. And whereas locally on September 20th, 2014, from 11 to 4, Coast Valley Substance Abuse Treatment Center, along with their sponsors, Immeris, the Taylor Family, Just Dance Lompoke, and the Fund for Santa Barbara, will be holding a Recovery Day in the Park, a free event for the Lompoke community to recognize the importance of National Recovery Month. There'll be free barbecue, entertainment, games for the kids, and booths with information on services available in Lompoke related to substance abuse and mental health. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and Coast Valley Systems Abuse and Treatment Center invite all residents of the city of Lompoke to participate in National Recovery Month, as well as Recovery Day in the Park. Now therefore, I, John H. Lind, Mayor of the city of Lompoke, California, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2014 as National Recovery Month, and call upon all residents to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support this year's Recovery Month, as well as our local Recovery Day in the Park event. The city council would like to sincerely thank Coast Valley Substance Abuse Treatment Center, along with their sponsors, Immeris, the Taylor Family, Just Dance Lompoke, and the Fund for Santa Barbara, for their generous community support. And on a personal note, thank you for all your hard work.[1315.01][1315.01](applause)
My name is Chuck Mattson and I am the supervisor of Coast Valley Substance Abuse Treatment Center here in Lompoke. First, I'd like to add one sponsor onto that list that we continue to forget every year, and that's Pastor Darren at New Hope Church.[1332.01][1332.01](applause) September is National Recovery Month, and its 25th year Recovery Month promotes the societal benefits of prevention, treatment, and recovery for mental and substance use disorders. This year's theme, Joining the Voices of Recovery, Speak Up, Reach Out, encourages people to openly speak about mental and substance use disorders and the reality of recovery, and promotes ways individuals can use to recognize behavioral health issues and reach out for help. Recovery Month spreads the positive message that behavioral health is essential to overall health, that prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover. Lompoke's recognition of National Recovery Month is Recovery Day in the Park, a one-day, completely free event for the community of Lompoke that includes a barbecue, live entertainment, games for kids, booths with information on services that support those in Lompoke suffering from substance abuse and mental health issues, and so much more. We at Coast Valley would like to thank the city of Lompoke for their continued support of this event and understanding of how important these services are for those who suffer on a daily basis in our community.
I want to thank Chuck and all the councils over there for all they do. I attended their graduation ceremony a month or so ago now, and some pretty amazing stories from the people who were graduating, some of who had struggled for years and were now finding a way out of it. So, thanks for what you guys do. And to the public out there, if you know someone who is in need of help, get them over to Coast Valley, they provide a wide range of services and most of them are covered by various programs, so. Okay. Oral Communications, your opportunity to talk to us about any subject. Who would like to talk to us?
The city administrator.
Oops. I left you out, Patrick, because I wrote two proclamations over the top of you. Okay, sorry Ken, you're out of it. We're going back to city administrator.
Thank you, mayor. I've got three items to quickly report on. Item number one, at the August 19th meeting in the council request section, council made a couple of different requests to have staff bring forward two items for consideration by council. One of them was with Measure P, which is a proposed ban on the high-intensity oil and gas operations in unincorporated areas of Santa Barbara County. That staff report has been drafted and is scheduled to be presented to you on October 7th. However, the other item you asked for was to prepare a staff report related to Senate Bill 1096, which sought to ban offshore drilling at Tranquil and Ridge. The week following your direction, SB 1096 failed on the Assembly floor and is no longer active legislation, therefore staff requests that we now forego preparation of the staff report and placing that on the agenda. Good by consensus?
I did invite the proponent of that project to come already, so they're liable to show up to speak.
Very well, thank you.
And I would say, with regard to the meeting, we need to agendize it in such a way that if we chose to take an action, we would be able to.
Yes.
Okay.
Secondly, at the special meeting of March 25th of this year, a mid-year fiscal analysis including recommendations on utility rates was presented, no action taken at that meeting. Subsequently, about a month and a half later, at the May 6 meeting, you adopted amongst other things Resolution 591314, which included the adoption of reserve policies and affirmed the year-two utility rate increases previously established by Prop 218 process. I've become aware that one or more of the council members may not have fully understood the entire impacts of the legislation they're taking action on, and upon reflection, I certainly see that we as staff could have been more clear in our presentation. And with that in mind and understanding the priority to be absolutely transparent and open in all of our actions, and to ensure that the votes are -- that you take on legislation are fully informed decisions, we're going to be bringing back the utility rate discussion with a comprehensive fiscal analysis. Currently, I expect that to be at the October 21st meeting. Advantage of that, too, is that we'll have the advantage of having into the fiscal year numbers by then, and we'll be able to have, I believe, a pretty concise depiction, and just want to make sure that we specifically focus on the utility rate issues and the accompanying reserves, and don't -- I think by having it separate and called out and not having other issues involved, we'll have a much more focused and intentional discussion and review on that. My final and third item is really relating to the November 4th meeting. Currently, we have two items scheduled, tentatively scheduled for that agenda, and both of them appear that they can be moved. My intention, if possible, I've been intending to keep the November 4th agenda as light as possible, and if possible, perhaps we'd be able to forego a meeting on that night. So, one concern I have right now is that we normally have, you've asked that any items that come to you have at least a three-meeting before-the-deadline rule, that we bring you anything. I was hoping that perhaps just in case the need arises, that maybe exclusively for the month of November 2014, if we could shorten that to a two-meeting in advance deadline, then that'll enable me as the decision on that date approaches and we get closer, I can make a decision about whether we're go or no-go on the evening of November 4th. So barring any objections, that's the path we're going to go forward to, and if you're supportive of that, then at the appropriate time, as we get close to that date, I'll confirm whether we're going to have or cancel a meeting for that date.
Everybody good with that? Okay.
Thank you. And I did want to point out, the two items currently that are scheduled for that night are the park and pool maintenance assessment district statement and the annual SB 1693 compliance report. I'm not expecting any problem by going to the second meeting in November on those, but that's just on the up and up. Thank you all very much, that concludes my report.
Okay. Any questions from council? Okay. Now we'll go to Oral Communications.
Now we'll go to oral communications.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, Lompoc community, Kenosha, Lompoc Valley, Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, a monthly update. On the 20th of August, I attended a C3H meeting with Councilmember Costa. An ongoing process. I know tonight there was supposed to be a presentation that will be delayed to another point, but it's a work in progress and some good things happening for our homeless community in Lompoc. That same evening, I attended a global hearts dinner at Vandenberg Air Force Base. That's a dinner that's held once a month for spouses and families of deployed members. This month, the chamber hosted that. It was a bowling night and pizza feed for the families, and that was a lot of fun. Probably about 50 people attended that event. On the 21st of August, we had a chamber luncheon. It was no on Measure P. This Thursday, we're going to be hosting another chamber luncheon for yes on Measure P. So if you haven't signed up yet for that luncheon, there's still room, so please call us tomorrow first thing, and that will be at Embassy Suites. That same afternoon, I attended a Military Affairs meeting with the Santa Maria Chamber, Buellton Chamber, Solvayne Chamber, dealing with our quarterly awards programs that we do for the base. It's been kind of a mess for a number of years. We're trying to organize it, and I think we're going to get there. So, with the four chambers working together, I think it's going to be a good program. That same evening, we had a mixer, Northside Shopping Center hosted that, as well as a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Garcia Dance Studio. A lot of good things happening down in that shopping center, so if you haven't been down there in a while, you should go check it out. Again, that same evening after that, our youth leadership, Lompoc Valley, kicked off their season with the parent orientation meetings, so the parents could understand what the program's all about and ask questions and help the kids get set up for the year, and to talk about our retreat that was held the 13th and 14th, hosted by Councilmember Lingual's spouse, who, has she recovered yet?
Almost.
Almost, okay. A long weekend with 18 teenagers. On the 22nd of August, I met with the First Five Group out of Santa Barbara County. That's a group that meets, works with kids from zero to five. They're looking at trying to bring some programs into Lompoc and maybe be part of that community-centered program that's down at El Camino School. On the 23rd, I had the great privilege of being part of the AYSO opening ceremonies for soccer. I won't tell you how my goalkeeping did, Marilyn, but it wasn't real pretty. On the 25th, attended Symposium for Hunger in Our Community. It was very eye-opening and a good information session. I think there's more to come from that than just that. I mean, that was just kind of the start of that. On the 26th, attended a newcomers briefing at Vandenberg Air Force Base. I do that twice a month. It's amazing to me the number of civilians and military come in every month. There's probably usually at least 30 to 50 people every two weeks, and share what we have going on in Lompoc, and answer questions about what we have to offer for them. That same morning, we had our last Old Town Market meeting for the season. It ended on August 29th. As you all know, it was a good season. I think we had a good Old Town Market this year, and we'll hopefully improve on that for even next year, make it even better. That afternoon, we had a ribbon-cutting for Joe's Taxi, the new taxi service here in On the 28th, attended the P4 Initiative Meeting at Vandenberg Air Force Base. I think most of you know what that's about. It's about teaming with the base community and sharing some of the services we have, some of the things they have, and saving money and helping raise money for other parts of the community. So, it's a good initiative. It's been working for, gosh, at least a year now, I think, and some good things have come from that. On the 2nd of September, our Tourism Investment District, the Hotel Association, met their regular monthly meeting. Things are going well, still a lot in the learning curve there, so we keep working at that. That same afternoon, I picked up this, of course, figures Councilmember Hohmald wouldn't be here tonight, because now I'm going to talk about Sideways. He's been yakking about that for months now, but I picked up our standees that we had around the community. Many of you may have seen those big green things with the wine bottle on it, and we had 17 of them distributed around town, some in the wineries, hotels, some of the businesses downtown, promoting the event, and some prizes you could apply for. Take your picture with the standee and submit it on either Twitter or Instagram. I don't know how to use either one of them, so. The next day on the 3rd, I emceed a Veterans Breakfast with Congresswoman Lois Capps at the Veterans Hall. She recognized two World War II veterans at that event. One of them happened to be my father-in-law, which was really kind of exciting to have that, so it was a nice event, and she meets just to discuss with veterans their issues and concerns that they have, and to try to work with them to resolve those issues. At lunchtime that day, I met with a group from Peace Lutheran Church called the Owls. Anybody know what the Owls mean? Older, Wiser Lutherans. So I got to talk to them about what was going on in Lompoc, and it was really, it was really good. I really enjoyed it, and they had some good questions and helped educate them about good things that are going on in Lompoc. On the 9th, I also attended another Vandenberg newcomers briefing. As I said before, it's twice a month we do that. That afternoon, we had a ribbon-cutting for the Boys and Girls Club at 800 North G Street, which is an apartment complex, that is kind of an interesting area, needs some things over there, so the Boys and Girls Club has reached out to provide some programs for the youth in that area. So, a good thing to happen over there. On the 10th, Subcommittee met for the Economic Development Committee to talk about the street impact fees and to make some recommendations that will go forward to the full committee and then eventually to the City Council, so I won't share that. I'll let the committee leadership do that. Again, on the 12th, the Tourism Investment District met again, another meeting, just to try to catch up with all the business and all the new things that keep coming their way. On that same day, that same afternoon, I wasn't there, I was in Fresno, but Southside Coffee Shop had a ribbon-cutting for their big renovation they've done over there, and it's amazing to see, or nice to see, some of the good things happening in our old town with the Lilly Building and the Rudolph Building, and now some things being done at Southside. Hopefully, more will follow down there to help spruce up that area. On the 15th of September, I attended the Boys and Girls Club Community Council meeting. Good news about their fundraising event, their golf tournament raised about $22,000 this year, which really helps keep the club going and do good things for the kids. And then again, today, the Tourism Investment District again met. A lot of things going on there with them, and we have to meet regularly to make sure we keep up with stuff. And then this afternoon, I attended the Workforce Investment Board Youth Council Meeting in Buellton, and we turned our standees, because the contest is over. Even though the Sideways program's not over, the contest part is, and there'll be a special screening of the movie Sideways on October 5th at the Arlington Theater. That whole event is controlled almost 100% by Fox Searchlight, the production company, so they keep changing things. These dates changed about five different times, but that's the plan for now. Oh, one last thing. On the 19th, our Military Affairs Committee, yes, this coming Friday, is holding their annual barbecue for the military at Vandenberg Air Force Base. That group has really come together, went through some struggles last year, but we're ready to go. Good, it's going to be another great event to serve our active-duty military and their families. A nice barbecue lunch that day, so that'll be on the 19th, this coming Friday. Questions?
Real quick, the Military Affairs, isn't the POWMI ceremony the same time as a conflict?
It's that afternoon. The POWMI is at 2 o'clock. The lunch will be done by probably 1:30. I know, because I'll be there both. Yeah, same thing, that happens every year, it seems like.
Anything else? Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Okay. Next. You don't get to talk as long as Ken. He has to make an official report.
Oh, favorites, huh?
Yeah, yeah, we play. We pay him a lot of money, so he has to tell us a lot about it.
I'm taken aback. I'm Barry Marks. Not long ago, you honored me with an appointment through the Library Board of Trustees, and I'm here to give you my first impressions, and to bestow upon you nothing but good news. So, first of all, in August, there were over 16,000 patron visits to our library system. All the law enforcement are gone, but I'm sure they'd agree with me when I tell you that literacy reduces crime. And to that extent, we have a children's reading program, we have an adult literacy program, we have an after-school homework club that not only helps kids move towards graduation, but keeps them off the street between 5 and 7, between 5 and 7, five days a week. A lot of people are wondering, why should I use a library? I've got a computer. And the library itself is in tune with that. It has tens of thousands of titles that can be downloaded in terms of books that you can listen to or read. It has movies that can be streamed. It has periodicals in the hundreds. And so, if people want to stay home and still participate in the library, they can do that. But when you go into the library, you see people always at the terminals. Not everybody has a computer. And people are looking for jobs, looking to upgrade their skills. And as an aside, let me tell you, one of the most profound life changes I've seen is when a woman in her 30s, a single mom, she had a job, but she never graduated high school. We helped her get her GED, and I've never seen such a fantastic life change. Those of us who had higher education, we tend to take high school for granted, but for many, many folks, it's an embarrassing hurdle that is the criterion for their own self-worth. So, the library is contributing to that. And beyond that, I want to share with you, as my marvelous partying gift to you, the book, What It Takes to Go to War. The library throughout September and October will be sponsoring a host of events that deals with people going, being deployed, and coming home, personally, family. There'll be films, there'll be discussions, there'll be a book discussion. These are for you to participate, to read, and perhaps participate. So, before I bow out, I still have a couple of minutes. I want to acknowledge Jessica Cadiante, our library director. She still is wearing two hats, because the position she filled before becoming our library director has not been filled yet. We're spiraling into that, but she's working marvelously and tirelessly, and we're very fortunate to have her as our librarian. Any questions for me? Oh, well, it takes a village. There you go. Thank you.
You know, a while back, Vandenberg was doing a house cleaning on their library, and, and I'm not sure it was Vandenberg, one of the libraries, and they came into the DRMO for disposal, and they were going to go to the landfill. And one of the scouts in my troop took it on as an Eagle Scout project to redistribute it, 8,000 books. And in the middle of that were some video packs called GI Diary, and nobody wanted them. So I snagged them, and I have them sitting there. Maybe that would be something good you guys could use for this, because they were World War II stories.
Quite possible.
I knew I saved them for a reason. I just didn't know what it was.
And that, one thing I wanted to share about that, regardless of what one thinks politically about the military conflict, I think there are very few in our broad-ranging society who would have anything but compassion for those who serve and their families, and that's the spirit in which this presentation is being offered. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your service on the board. Anyone else want to talk to us? Come on down.
My name's Rodney Spooner, and I'm here simply representing myself. Tomorrow, September 17th, will be the 227th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States, establishing a new and unique republic never before seen in history and never, ever duplicated since. The Constitution of the United States is the oldest continuously-working constitution in the history of the world, which attests to the fact that our founding fathers were not only educated and intelligent, but most wise in the application of their education and intelligence as they crafted the Constitution. I can imagine that over the several months, the debate was raucous, maybe even bitter at times, but always lively. They could have selfishly set themselves up as kings, but they were better men than that, and instead gave something far greater for the betterment of all mankind, a light for liberty to the world. Thirty-nine men signed the Constitution on that day in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. They knew that they were signing their death warrant, but they all strongly believed in an idea that later would be called the Great Experiment. When Ben Franklin exited the Constitutional Convention, a lady asked, "Sir, what have we got?" And he replied simply, "A republic, ma'am, if you can keep it." For the first 100 years or so, elected representatives remained true to the spirit and principles of the Constitution, probably because the original signers were still alive for council, and as they passed away, their great influence continued to be felt. The debates in Congress weren't so much left and right as they were right and wrong, and were focused on constitutional authority. The federal government at that time was still bound by the chains of the Constitution. But over the years since then, statesmen turned into politicians, as elected servants started to become more self-serving. The political process started becoming more perverted and problematic. On this 227th anniversary of our Constitution, I just wanted to remind each elected servant and each appointee of their oath of office to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And I had no idea that there was going to be a swearing in. As sworn elected servants, your first and foremost duty is to the Constitution and to honor your oath of office by protecting the constitutional rights and private property of people, not take them away. While we, the people, may gripe about politicians, we must also be reminded that we elect them and we put them there, usually voting blind allegiance to a party, myself included, but no more. While parties divide us, we should be focusing on one thing that unites us, and that's the Constitution of the United States. But how can we do that if we don't know and understand the Constitution and the republic that our founding fathers intended? We must read, learn, and understand the principles and the original intent of the Constitution and to teach our children, not leave it just to the schools. It's our children's future. In President Andrew Jackson's farewell address, March 4, 1837, he said, "But you must remember, my fellow citizens, that eternal vigilance by the people is the price of liberty, and that you must pay the price if you wish to secure its blessing." So before the coming November election, I hope that the voters will read and vote for the Constitution instead of blindly for partying. I have a limited number of free-pocket constitutions to present to council members, as well as to the audience, and I was afraid I wasn't going to have enough when I first entered the room, but I think I might now. Thank you for your time and consideration, and may God bless.
Thank you, Rodney. Thank you.
My name is Darrell Tullis, and, you know, it's amazing to me, I still get nervous when I come up here, even though I know everybody. But I tend to get nervous when I'm going to talk about something that's kind of passionate to me, and, you know, I'm still wanting to talk about the street market that's being closed. Excuse me. And I have a couple of questions for you, and I'm wondering, were other options considered? Seems like to me that something that's been going on in this city for 25 years. One of my questions is, is this the first council that has had this brought to them about possibly closing this thing? And if so, I don't understand how one council gets together and decides to close it, instead of considering other options such as fines for violations, possibly parking tickets for people who aren't parked where they're supposed to park, excuse me, higher fees and higher taxes for the vendors, maybe to not only bring in revenue, but also to encourage them to stay within the boundaries of the things that they would now be them to stay within the boundaries of the things that they would now be paying more for. Parking meters for places like over at Sissy's if they're, if people are going to park over there where they're not supposed to be parked. And something else to be considered, even now, since we're, you know, you've been talking about keeping it open for a couple of more months rather than closing it immediately until you could possibly find another place. You've mentioned the high school parking lot. Why not keep it open until you do find another place? Because the bottom line is, me personally, I happen to know, the high school parking lot is not going to work. They have basketball tournaments, they have swim meets, they have track meets. There are several different, they have the cancer walk that goes on over there, several different things that go on at that school throughout the year. So there's no way that anybody really thought that the high school parking lot was going to work. So if you ask me, you either have to find someplace else, and most places in this city are going, not going to be within walking distance for the people that use that. So if you really wanted to keep it open until you find someplace else, why not keep it open until you find someplace else? I've heard things like, the people that, the vendors are not from Lompoc, and so it shouldn't matter to Lompoc. Well, even if the vendors are not from Lompoc, the people that use the market are from Lompoc. Once again, it brings about a sense of community. People from different parts of the community go and use the old town, the street market. I heard mentioned something about the Old Town Market that goes on on Friday nights throughout the summer. Couple of years back, there were complaints from the store owners in that area about how that street gets shut down, and so their patrons didn't have access to their businesses. No one shut that down. A different part of Lompoc participates in the Old Town Market. We shut down H, or Ocean, to have the cars be able to cruise on cruise night. Nobody's talking about not having that happen. So to me, it seems like a certain part of our community is being easily pushed out of something that's been going on for 25 years, and I'd like for you to think about reconsidering. And my last question to you, have you ever made a decision, voted on it, realized that it was a mistake, and went back and said, "You know what? We made a mistake here. Let's rethink this and re-vote on it." Thank you.
Thank you, Darryl.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, citizens. My name is Frank Campo, and my colleague here, he brought up the S-word. I was going to bring it up, but he brought it up first. But first, I want to talk about the proclamation given to Coast Valley earlier this evening. Chuck and his group does a fantastic job. I personally am involved in Veterans Treatment Courts. We have graduation about every six months. We have a graduation coming up in October. I'd like to extend an invitation to the city council to attend graduation. That's normally in Santa Maria, but what folks don't realize is we have a large proportion of veterans from Lompoc that are actively engaged in the Veterans Treatment Courts. So I think it'd be nice to have some support from our own city. I would like to talk about the swap meet, and, you know, I agree that it's outgrowing its location and should find another location to go to. But living in Palm Springs for five years, the College of the Desert, in Palm Desert, they sponsor a swap meet or a street fair every weekend, and it's phenomenal. It brings a lot of revenue to the city. So when I was sent here last week, I heard some figures. I think the swap meet brings in $50,000 a year to the city, and if we shut that down and don't have it in the city no more, that's $50,000 that the city's not going to have for revenue. I know the city's coming up on their budget hearings for the next year, for the two-year cycle, so that's just something to think about, is, you know, that's $50,000 that we won't have coming in. I've talked to some folks, and they said, "Well, why not the drive-in?" I explained that drive-ins privately owned. I know a lot of cities do have swap meets and drive-ins. Currently, our drive-in has been shut down for at least 10 years. The owner is paying property tax on that. I'm sure they would appreciate maybe some additional revenue to help offset some of that fees. So just some, you know, thoughts out there, and I'd just like to say thank you.
Thank you. With regard to the drive-in, it's in the county, and in the county, an outdoor market is illegal. We talked about annexing it, but we didn't move forward.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Paul Rosso, a resident of the great city of Lompoc and enjoy living here for over 40 years. But do you hear that sound? It's money being taken out of the pockets of the citizens of Lompoc so they cannot spend it in local businesses to increase sales tax revenue. Last August 2013, I objected to the large rate increases to water and sewer. As you voted for these increases, this appeared to be no big deal for four of you. Well, one of you at least didn't vote for it. Well, it's a big deal for me. I have today, over one year later, have experienced these rate increases from my August 2013 bill to the October 2013 bill, to finally the August 2014 Lompoc Utility Bill. The increases have been whopping, to say the least. Forty-one point seven percent in sewer billing increase from August 2013 to the October 2013, and finally the August 2014 bill. So from August, in a year, it's gone up 41.7%. As to water, the billing has increased for our usage 40% from August 2013 to August 2014. And the reason this increase is so low is because we reduced our water usage. If the water usage was the same, the increase would have been a whopping 74.5%. I listened to the September 2nd council meeting when a question was asked about the revenue increases. A voice off-camera, and I sort of assumed it was the finance director, said he wouldn't have the final data until December. Well, it was good to hear tonight that the data will be available in October. And I do believe you have the data now, because I talked to someone in the water department and pulled up almost instantaneously my bills for the last six years, and I had a question which wasn't really related precisely to the increase. I requested, in a September 3rd email, which I sent to all of you, that I wanted an answer to the question at this city council meeting. Obviously not, even if preliminary and unaudited. But if it's October, that's good. I really appreciate and thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I was going to, I'm going to talk about an issue on the Consent Calendar, number three, about the bridge, Robinson Bridge. But you brought up the swap meet, and yes, it was, it did come before the council, when I was on the council before, and I believe it was in 2007. And at that time, there were a lot of complaints, same complaints. I think, and at that time, we did not vote to get rid of the swap meet. It was to have it better managed and monitored. I don't know what happened to the monitoring, but right now, the answer to that swap meet is better management. We ran, I was a member of the Old Town Market Committee since it began in 2000, and it's well-managed, and that is why we don't outgrow our area. We had a very small area, and we kept the vendors down. So there are ways to make the swap meet successful. And then also, the library, I wanted to commend, I'm president of the Board of the Library, and thank Barry for being here, and then Jessica for the great job she's doing. Now, item three on the consent calendar has to do, yes, sir?
I'm going to pull it if you want to.
Okay, all right.
And you can come back, talk about it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So what I was saying, Dan, is my intent is to pull item three so we can have a little discussion on it, because it's mostly good news, finally, after years of struggle. Ma'am?
I'm all local resident. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give you a little update. Probably everybody has seen, the Trash Mob was a huge success, and we now have over 200 members, which is amazing in the short time that this has come about. But what I wanted to bring to your attention is that normally, this is going to be held on the second Saturday of every month, but because the city's holding their Community Day on October 25th, the Trash Mob is going to be held that day in conjunction with that. So if members of the community don't have a group to join up with for the Community Work Day, they can certainly join the Trash Mob. And it's a super, super group, and it's a lot of fun, and it's great exercise, too. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, I just happened to catch last night at 6:30 that the UUAW was putting on a forum at the library. So I ran down there, and it was very interesting. I think I'm the only one that wasn't a member of UUAW that showed up, and it's really unfortunate because it was an excellent discussion about what's going on in our schools and the education going on in the reading program that they've adopted from United Way. And United Way was there speaking to that, Sid Hardall was there. The teacher that actually tested that program out was there and spoke very, very highly of it in the jumps in grades that the students have accomplished with this reading program. And as you said, everything is based on reading, so that's very important. The program that is now handling the literacy program at the library, the gal that's over that now was there speaking, she's new in January, and she actually was pretty exciting. You know, she's really got some good ideas and some things that she wants to bring to that program, so I was really encouraged about that. And the Director of Health Start from Santa Barbara was here talking about the importance in preschool education and giving leg up on that. So there's actually a site that they'd like you to go on and just put in your name, and that's all you have to do, put it, fill out the little form that comes right up, and the more people that do that, the more hits they get, the more chance they get. It's about a program, you know, to evaluate the programs, I guess, and come up with the very best programs for the school. So it's a little different than the reading program. But I will send that to you as well, so that you've got that. So anyway, just wanted to tell you, there's some things going on in the school. Our impact group, the first meeting from the Town Hall, is Bonnie Campbell has been out of the country, and she's working on that right now, so that's coming up. And one of the things really that we need to have real involvement with in that is the school district. So I'm looking forward to that. We have a couple of board members that are, have been involved with that, and a couple pre-meetings to the Town Hall, so hopeful. So thank you, and thank you that showed up to that, too. And to the Trash Mob, thanks.
So since she opened it up, I'm going to get a plug in for the Mayor's Ball, which raises money for the United Way Reading Program. And I don't have my book in front of me, so I don't have the date, but it's coming up next month. There are tickets available. Last year, it raised over $50,000 for the Reading Plus Program, and it is a themed event. So this year, the theme of the event is modeled after the British TV show Downton Abbey. So a good time will be had by all. If you want to come out for an outstanding evening, you can get ahold of me, or you can go to the United Way's website and come and have a good time with us. Anyone else that would like to speak now? Seeing no one rise, we'll close our communication, and we'll come back to the council. We have items on consent this evening. Item number one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of 8:19:14. Approval of expenditures, voucher registered for $172,000, one for $334,000, one for $380,000. Credit refunds of $19,000, electronic payments principally for our electric utility of $2.9 million, and manual checks of $5,000. Item number three, the award of Project CS-13-S5, the Highway 246 Bicycle Pedestrian Bridge Feasibility Study. And as I mentioned, I'll ask to pull that. And item number four, approval of FY 2014-50, an agreement for operating the county-wide library system. And item number five, required obligation payment schedule alias the ROPS. Is there any other item a council member would like to pull? Councilmember Starbuck?
I wouldn't like to pull item four, but what I'd like to do is give a little attention to the library, our most-used public facility, and there's some really great news in here. Jessica, I'd like you to go ahead and just tell the, you know, public real quick what's going on with the library.
Good evening, council, mayor, citizens.
Pull that all the way up, and you can stand up.
I am Jessica Cadiante, the library director, and Councilmember Starbuck has asked me to just let you know what the county funds are used for. And in 2013-14, the county did raise our allocation levels back to the 2010 levels. So we still have not seen an increase or a raise from the county, and actually, this year was a little less than for 2014-15. But with that money, it did allow us to open eight more hours at the library. We are currently open 44. That 44 hours a week sees that 16,000 people a month, nearly 20,000 checkouts every month. We are very busy, we are loud, and we would love to be open more. It has also allowed us to maintain our book budget. We currently spend 12% of our budget on books. Now, that may not sound like a lot to you, but we are the best in black gold, our consortium. 2% is what Paso Robles spends, barely 4% is what Santa Barbara spends, and you better believe their budgets are a lot higher than ours. So we're really proud of that. We actually cut full-time positions before we cut the book budget. We like to see the least impact to the citizens as possible. And we do still struggle, but we are thankful that the city does support us, and because without it, we would see additional cutbacks. We do receive no funding from state. We have a renewed commitment at the library. We are very sincere about our commitment to education in the city of Lompoc and helping the schools and teaming with them, and we are working smarter. We are automating services. We are looking to use our staff in other ways, not just for the check-in and the checkout of books, but really to do community outreach. And so that is my short update. You have any questions?
Thank you. The Bookmobile?
Yes, the Bookmobile. I do receive many questions. It is a process. We were very excited to see five proposals hit my desk for the Bookmobile, so I am currently reading over those with our interim fleet superintendent, Dirk Ishiwata, and we do have a consultant who's also helping me look at those. So we most likely will be debuting in 2015, not 2014, but we are very excited, and go Bookmobile.
Thank you. Is there any other item a council member would like to pull? Okay, so accept a motion for items one, two, four, and five.
So moved.
And a second.
I'll second.
Okay. And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can we vote, please? And that passes four, zero, and one absent. Okay, now back to item number three. And my purpose in pulling it is not that there's any controversy, it's just that this has been so long in coming, and then I think the public has asked and asked and asked, so I have asked the Public Works Department to give us a little timeline on how it took us 105 years to get a bridge widening. That can be quite that long, 1939.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mike Luther, Assistant Public Works Director. So I'm here tonight to discuss the So I'm here tonight to discuss the item of awarding a consultant service contract to NV5 for the Highway 246 Bicycle Pedestrian Feasibility Study. So it's not actually a bridge widening, it's a study to see if it's possible. So I want to clarify that a little bit.
We have hope.
So the existing Robinson Bridge on 246 was built in 1939, and has only, has a 26-foot-wide roadway surface. So that causes both vehicular traffic, farm equipment, pedestrians, bicyclists, all to share that very narrow space for approximately 400 feet. So it could be hair-raising if you're walking or biking across that. And the bridge services some major facilities on the east side of town, the Bridge House Shelter and the Riverbend, I'm sorry, River Park, City River Park. So as I think you're aware, the current bridge is programmed in the Measure A Investment Plan for replacement in 2034, '35, so quite a ways out. So in July of 2011, council started the process at God's here today, trying to find a viable and economical solution to provide a safer pedestrian crossing of the 246. Staff has worked with SB CAG, the Santa Barbara...
County Association of Governors.
County Association of Governors. So used to just saying SB CAG, but to secure $343,000 of regional surface transportation funds for this feasibility study. The intent of the feasibility study is to consider a range of alternatives that would provide a bicycle and pedestrian crossing that serves Highway 246 at the lowest possible cost and as soon as possible. So staff recommends that the city council take, award the project, NV5 Incorporated, and approve the necessary supplemental budget appropriations in order to perform the subject feasibility study.
And Mike, could you talk about the other money that's sitting out there that was allocated that we still have access to ultimately?
In the Measure A Investment Plan, it lists two projects, two named projects for Highway 246, or actually an east river crossing. So the first part of that was they allocated, so they allocated $8 million of Measure A funding for this purpose of replacing a bridge. $700,000 of that was allocated for what they call Phase One, which is a, was a study to determine what the best location for that bridge would be in 2034. And that was either an existing location on 246 or a new location on what was known as Central Avenue Extension. And Central Avenue Extension has been taken out of the equation because it's been eliminated from the general plan. So the $700,000 study that was, actually, I think it was $300,000.
$300,000.
Not $700,000. It's kind of not really needed at this point because there's really only one location that they're looking at for replacing the bridge, and that's its current location. So that money is potentially still available for reprogramming by SB CAG Board at a future date. So if it's determined that through the study that a bridge, pedestrian bridge, is feasible, whether attaching it to the existing bridge or a self-supporting bridge, then potentially that money could be reprogrammed to that purpose by the SB CAG Board.
Thank you. And having been involved with the council and moving this forward, and with the SB CAG Board and moving it forward, finally, we're going to get somewhere. Any questions? Councilmember Lingle?
Ladies and gentlemen, Mike, you know, I listened to you. I was just wondering, assuming we go through with this project, you know, the study is feasible and we go through with it, are we looking at somehow using this project that it could be used with the, when in 2000, what is it, '35, '45?
'35? That the... '34, '35. '34, '35.
That this pedestrian crossing bike bridge would be then utilized in the new bridge as well? Is that being considered, or?
Yeah, that's probably, obviously, the most economic solution without doing the study would be to somehow attach it to the existing bridge. There's some debate with Caltrans whether or not that's even going to be possible. So we are looking at other alternatives, so either putting a bridge, self-supported bridge to the south or to the north of the existing bridge, and we'd obviously look at located it in a place where it wouldn't have to be removed. I mean, so the idea is, yes, it would somehow still be usable in the future.
Okay, thanks.
Kind of trying to resolve this issue a little sooner than when we're all on our old monarchies. Thank you, Mike. Would anyone like to speak on this subject? I think, there you go.
Mayor, City Council, Frank Campo. Having built bridges in the military for almost 10 years, I know the difficulty that's going to come. Everyone is aware that today, state law is, if you're riding a bicycle, the car must stay three feet away from you. And I believe with the current configuration of the bridge, that's almost nearly impossible. So I would say one of the highest priorities would maybe build a bike and footpath bridge across both sides, because you have folks that go to the park on the north side, and then you have folks that go to the Bridge House. And I personally know the director of the Good Samaritan Shelters, and she cringes every time she goes out to the Bridge House because there's always normally a young female mother pushing a stroller right around twilight, going back to the Bridge House. And we've been fortunate that we've not had any severe fatalities or accidents, but it's just a matter of time. So I would just, I would implore you to make this a priority of at least a footpath and a bike path. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm on the Board of Directors for the Good Samaritan Services. Right now, we serve at a Bridge House about 92 people, and that includes women and children. And what Mr. Campos said is true. It is a disaster waiting to happen because it's so narrow. I would just urge you, you know, studies are great. I don't know how long it'll take. Well, I do know how long studies take. I hope you will try and move this along pretty fast because there's a real need. I'm just speaking as, well, not as a member of the board, but as a citizen, because I've picked up people there at the bridge when it's been very trafficky. So I would just urge you, and when you get to your SB CAG meeting, just demand that they use, I believe Mr. Luther said, maybe $700,000 is available to build a footpath and a bike path. But just keep at it, and I think there's a real need, and I appreciate your help and your effort on this because we do need it for all the people. And Bridge House is serviced, and I know it's in the county, but we are serving the people of Lompoc. So it's for our people. So I appreciate your trying to move this forward faster. Tell this consultant to move a little faster. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam Wall, again. I just have a question because I'm not really sure how the SB CAG works. I ran into a gal from Santa Maria, and she had been involved through the PTA on some subcommittee with the funds, and they were able to get some things done for Guadalopee and some other things. But she mentioned that we don't have representation. Apparently Joyce, no, I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about the public. I know you're on there. But it was my understanding that Joyce Howerton was on there when she was part of SB CAG, and when she stopped being the director of SB CAG, we no longer had representation. Do you know anything about that? Because it seems to me sometimes we don't get represented by the public very well.
I think it may be the five-member Citizens Advisory Committee.
Uh huh. Do we have somebody on there?
There are two from the north county and three from the south county. I don't think we have one, someone from Lompoc right now because it rotates around. But that's just, that's the Oversight Board. The board itself that makes all the decisions is actually divided into the north county board and the south county board. So the north county board is all the mayors of the north county plus the three supervisors that, well, now four because, I don't know, three and a half. Supervisor Carver Hall sits on the board but can't vote on some things. And then we look at all the projects in the north county and make our recommendation to the board. The south county board has the three south county supervisors and the three mayors from down there. They make decisions, and we actually have two pots of money. So we decide what we're going to do with our pot of money, and they vote yes on it, and they decide what they're going to do with their pot of money, and we vote yes on it. And currently, kind of the interim light maybe for this is that all the projects that we have had going have come in under budget over the last three years, so there's been residual revenue that's been moving forward. And there's, I had a commitment from the board members to take a serious look at this bridge in Lompoc with some of that revenue that's coming forward, and that's why we're kind of trying to get this done now. And we should, we may also have some residual money from the 246 Passing Lane Project, which is for our part of the world.
Well, that's really urgent, really urgent, and everybody knows about that bridge.
Yeah, and it's just, the thing that kind of delayed it for a while was originally, it was envisioned as a study to look at both the Central Avenue Extension and then something at 246. In 2011, the council, without me sitting because I had a conflict, voted to not move forward with that. And then we went back to the board, and Mike could give you all the timelines, and went through these steps to get the money reauthorized to study just the 246 location. And although there are more than one location listed on here, that's just the preliminary look at, you know, what are the best choices and where could it go? And then once staff looks at the consultant's first round of work, and then they'll drill down on just one alternative. So they're going to have a little broader look just to see where it could go, and then select the best alternative, and then there'll be serious work done on the one alternative. And we're really hoping that there'll be a way to hang it on the existing bridge because that would be an awful lot less expensive.
Well, the problem needs to get resolved as soon as possible because it's not a matter of if it's when somebody gets killed on that bridge.
Yep.
And like Mr. Campos said, that law did go into effect about the bikes.
Yeah, with the, you know, it's truly an issue, and we're now able to take a step, so we're further along than we've been in the last five years.
Well, I hope you take that into account if somebody gets ticketed. Thanks.
Thank you. So anyone else would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one rise, we'll close our communication, and we'll come back to the council. Is there any further discussion on item five? Or three, I'm sorry. Seeing none, I'll move item three, move the staff recommendation, and look for a second.
I'll second.
Okay. And is there any other discussion? Seeing none, can we vote, please? That passes four, zero, and one absent. City Clerk, written communications.
Nothing.
Oral communications, your last opportunity to talk to us for two minutes about anything. Who has something to say?
Helen here.
Hi, Frank Campos, City of Lompoc. I just want to bring up two items real quick. The book that the library gave you, I've almost read probably seven, eighth of the book. It's a very good book. If you start reading it, you're going to see some far eastern religions, some mysticism in there, some Viking in there. I know it's going to turn off a lot of people reading it, but please just muddle on through it. It's a very good book. And actually, there's a chapter in there that deals about our neck of the town. The gentleman that wrote the book came out to solving, and he kind of had his cleansing spirits from the Vietnam War at the mission in Sandy Ness. So it's a really good one, and I assisted Jessica with putting together the forum, so we got some really good speakers coming up. We're going to talk, we're going to have some speakers that talk about their experience in Vietnam. That's going to be Mr. Bob Hatch. Everyone, you know, thinks a lot about Bob. We're going to have a Persian Gulf War veteran speak. We're going to have a Iraq veteran speak. And lastly, we're going to have a reservist speak on her first night, just their experience. Then we're going to have folks talk about, you know, education, employment, training benefits that maybe they might be eligible for. We're going to have some mental health experts there all one night to discuss some mental health issues. And lastly, we're going to talk about a very important veteran that gets normally forgotten. That's the female veteran. A lot of females don't recognize themselves as veterans. So we've devoted just a night for female veterans. So again, it starts next Monday, and my last one is Pam brought up the Trash Mob, and I want to know if we can get some Sharps containers from the hospital so we can pick up some hazardous communication.
I'd bet Mr. Bob could help you with that.
Actually, the other thing is, maybe the hospital can do it, but also county public health issues them.
Okay, anyone else? Last chance. Go and go and go on. Okay. Council requests comments and meeting reports. Who'd like to be first?
Okay, I'll try to be brief. No, I will. It was a busy two weeks, but I'll just briefly go over it. I also attended the Visit Lompoc meeting. Let's see, I attended Veterans Breakfast at the Vets Memorial Building, Stan Hart's retirement ceremony, the EDA luncheon here, the Community Advisory Board at Vandenberg Air Force Base, the Ag Forum, great event we had. It was the first agricultural forum in Santa Barbara County held at our Dick Dewey Center. Great participation, great forum. Same day, I attended the first responders luncheon at St. Mary's Episcopal Church. Mural in the Day. If you have not seen the new mural in town, it's on the north wall of Sissy's down Art Alley. You have to go see it. You will, it's three-dimensional, and you will have to go up to the wall to make sure that it is really not standing out. It is just, I think it's the most amazing mural in town, and we have a lot of amazing murals. Good on Art Alley, take a look at that. Attended a meeting at Valley Haven and a meeting for the Boys and Girls Club. There were no city expenses on any of those.
This will be brief. I'm not going to make a report.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Two quick things. The first is that I wanted to remind everyone of the Food, Food, Food Event, which is free for seniors in the community, Friday, September 26th, I believe is the date. And that's in the morning time until about lunchtime. Again, free for seniors. Try to talk about food literacy and needs of seniors and the hunger issue in our community. So really great event, Food, 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 put on by primarily the Area Agency on Aging. The other thing is the Ag Forum, which was fantastic, probably one of the best I've been to. I mean, I was, it was really fantastic. And there was a point when the panelists were talking about the quality of care when it comes to local crops and local livestock, and there was one gentleman who represented a livestock company, and he raised cattle. And, you know, he made this comment that, it went something like, you know, we take such good care of our cattle that their slogan is "Only One Bad Day," which, if you stay a second and think about it, it took the crowd like a second, and then everyone like burst out into laughter. I thought it was the funniest thing. But it just really rang true to me that there's this really great community in Santa Barbara County, agriculture, looking at the farm-to-table ideas and getting people more access, access to local livestock and things like that. So I just wanted to commend the city staff who were involved with that because, I mean, really, really fantastic event. Thanks.
Well, I want to start with some good news from the city administrator's letter. We had, so far this year, we have had 135 plan reviews for new larger projects through our building department. We have issued 411 building permits. We've done 2,406 inspections, including one day when they did, when one inspector did 46, I don't even know how you do that, for 391 different projects. And this came up because former councilmember Samensky and Mayor Samensky said to me the other day, hey, the Santa Barbara news press says we're not building anything, and I went, well, they're asleep. So year-to-date, we have $19.6 million in new construction that's been permitted, which would be, if the rate continues, about $29 million for the year.
And by comparison, last year was $39 million, but $13 million of that was for the Champion Center, more than 13 million. So we're actually running ahead of last year. And we just issued 17 more permits for new homes at Briar Creek. So I attended a lot of the same events as everybody else, so I'll just focus on the ones that I was particularly thankful for Congresswoman Capps for holding the Veterans Breakfast. And she's done that every year. I really appreciate that. I did attend the League of Cities along with Councilmember Hohndahl and city administrator, assistant city administrator, last week in Los Angeles, came back with a bunch of great ideas. And I'll be sharing some of those with you as I get them fleshed out in the future. Our own Fire Chief Ladapow was a presenter down there, and I attended one of the workshops he presented, did a marvelous job, and always well-attended. Had a quarterly meeting with the Lompoc Unified School District to just kind of share information. We had, our Employee Development Association last week had a luncheon here in City Hall Chambers where the Red Cross presented their Disaster Preparedness Program. And if you don't have a disaster plan for your home, if you go to the Red Cross website, you can download all these good things so you can be prepared. I participated in a 9/11 remembrance at 6:45 on 9/11 at Fire Station One with Councilmember Hohndahl and the city administrator. And let's see, I agree with Councilmember Costa, the Northern Santa Barbara County Economic Alliance AG Workshop was just outstanding. Councilmember Lingle was there for it, too. Probably the most exciting thing was a week ago, Friday, we'd go last Friday, so a week and a half ago, the Petroleum Education Council signed an agreement with ExxonMobil to provide renewed safety training for all of ExxonMobil's employees and all of their contract employees. And we don't have a final number yet, but it'll probably bring around 4,000 students to Lompoc for a 10-hour class between a week from now and December 1st. So we're going to see a lot of oil company folks here. And I thought that earlier when the guy said, if you're a friend, come on in, and if not, come on in and be a friend, that's probably our motto. And the trash mob was a lot of fun. I also was pleased to represent the city at the Lompoc Filipino American Club banquet and administer the oath of office to theirs new folks. Stopped by the local fest at Can Adam Park on the way home. A good time was being had by all, but I missed St. Anne's Place, and that's what I was going there for. And then we had the Mexican Independence Day Celebration at Ryan Park on Sunday. And our new police chief took time out of, from his family and came by and got on the stage and talked to the crowd and made a marvelous first impression. And last night, Slompoc's Pops concert was over the top with the new guest director and a vocalist and the guy that invented the wah-wah pedal for guitars. And it was really a lot of fun. So that's all the news I have to report. And we are therefore adjourned to a special meeting at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 23rd, right here.